Chairman Mendez.
Here.
All present, thank you.
Okay, welcome to the October 21st meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin with the invocation and flag salute. The invocation will be led by District Three. After the invocation, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And today we have Mr. Subjeet Singh from the Sikh Institute. If you could please do the invocation for us, and then we'll do the flag salute.
[speaking in Pashto] 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 [speaking in Pashto]
In a few words, I will elaborate all what I said in Punjabi. One universal Creator God, by the grace of the two Guru. Almighty God, we call you by many names, but you are one. Keep your divine hand over the members of county council members as they help steer the future of our great city. Keep truth on our tongues, love in our hearts, and sound judgment in our minds. Remind us of our purpose, to love and serve one another, and create a more peaceful world. We ask for blessings unto all leaders as they work for the common good. Give all who go on this land humility and courage, integrity, and compassion. Release each of, each one of us from ego so that we can serve selflessly. Help us remember that we belong to our one family. Recognize the entire human race as one. We ask of the Almighty to also keep watch over our nation's protectors who work tirelessly day and night to ensure our safety and our freedom. You are everywhere, all are yours, whatever is seen, oh God, is your form. My Lord, you are but one. We ask you to bless this great nation and its people. In the name of Nanak, may we, may we find everlasting peace, love, unity, mutual respect, service, and dedication to all of humankind. With your will, Almighty God, may there be welfare for the all humanity. Thank you. [speaking in Pashto]
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
[applause]
Agendas are in the back table for anyone wanting to follow.
Item number one, approve agenda.
For approval.
Second?
Got a second? All in favor is going to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none? Move to...
We now move to item number two, approve consent agenda, items numbers twenty through sixty-one. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Chairman wishes to pull item twenty-four. Item twenty-four is pulled, Vice Chairman Mendez.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I can pull item thirty-two point one because of the Levine Act.
Does anybody else want to pull an item?
Nope.
Does anybody in the public want to pull an item?
Mr. Chairman, item forty-two?
Which one?
Forty-two.
Oh. Okay, so I will need a motion for the balance.
Tomo. Second.
All in favor, so we're saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries.
We'll go ahead and take up those items after item four.
Right.
Okay. We now move...
Do twenty-four first.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
We move to item number three, under Board of Supervisors, presentation retirement plaque to John Reynolds, Sheriff's Department, twenty-nine years of service.
Good morning, Chairman Mendez, members of the board, the public. Today I had the honor and privilege of talking about retired Sheriff's Captain John Reynolds. John began his career with the Selma Police Department before transferring to the Fresno County Sheriff's Office in nineteen ninety-six. And we were actually sworn in on the front lawn by Sheriff McGarian on the same day. Sometimes things you just remember. Of the course of nearly three decades, he served a wide range of assignments and leadership roles that spanned patrol, investigations, command, and executive staff. Early in his career, he worked in the K-9 unit and special investigations, including both narcotics and vice intelligence. In two thousand and four, he was promoted to Deputy Sheriff Four, and then to Sergeant in two thousand and five, serving in patrol across all four geographical areas of Fresno County, before moving to a detective position in two thousand and seven. By two thousand and ten, he supervised both Area One and Area Three robbery property investigations. During this time, he led the Sheriff's Office Home Invasion Robbery Task Force, a multi-agency operation that dismantled a criminal network involving three rival gangs from the Phoenix, Arizona area to the Central Valley, targeting victims of gold jewelry. This effort culminated in multiple arrests and successful prosecutions in what was known as Operation Firebird. Beyond primary assignments, John also held collateral leadership positions. From two thousand and eight to two thousand and twelve, he supervised the Sheriff's K-9 unit. And from two thousand and three to two thousand and twenty-three, for twenty years, he served as an FBI certified bomb technician, and later as commander of the Explosive Ordnance Disposal Team at the Sheriff's Office, commonly referred to as EOD. So if you get a package addressed to John Reynolds or from John Reynolds, don't touch it. In two thousand and twelve, John was promoted to Lieutenant. His commands included our Court Services Unit, Area One Patrol, Magic, Rule Operations, the Training Unit, Internal Affairs. And in two thousand and twenty-three, he became a Sheriff's Captain, taking command of the Detective Bureau. In that role, he established the County of Fresno Targeted Violence Prevention Task Force, which is a multi-agency partnership among law enforcement, schools, and mental health agencies, and additionally, private sector stakeholders, designed to proactively reduce the threat of mass casualty incidents within our community. And that is a very, very successful program, working with the Fresno County Office of Education, many of our local school districts, that is still in place, and really is the template or the plan for how we handle situations when we talk about school violence or mass casualty incidents. After twenty-nine years of service, John retired from the Sheriff's Office, leveraging a year of accrued annual leave to accept the appointment as Chief of Police for the City of Sanger. In this role, he continues his commitment to public safety, organizational leadership, and community engagement. Please help me congratulate John for both his retirement from the Sheriff's Office and his new assignment as Chief of Police in the City of Sanger. And for the, he is one of six retired Sheriff's employees who holds a Chief of Police position at a law enforcement agency here in Fresno County.
Yeah.
So we have a really, really good track record, good people.
That's right, all of them. Did you want any, say anything, or?
Thank you very much, Chairman Mendez, Directors, Board of Supervisors, Sheriff, my colleagues from the Sheriff's Office. I do want to say thank you for this opportunity and this recognition. I owe a debt of gratitude to the Sheriff's Office for nearly a decade, three decades. The opportunities, the challenges, they have shaped me into who I am today and launched me forward into this leadership role with the City of Sanger. Couldn't have done it without them. And I always say, if somebody does thirty years in one assignment alone at the Sheriff's Office, they have missed out on the opportunities. I just was given opportunities, I jumped on them, and, and I hope others will have the same opportunities that I have had. So it's been an absolute pleasure serving the residents of the County of Fresno. Thank you.
Well, I'll start off by thanking you, twenty-nine years of service, and also want to thank you for taking the Sanger job. I mean, you're still in my district, which is a good deal.
Yes, sir.
So is anybody else want to?
Yeah, no, I just also want to congratulate you. I mean, three decades of service, that list is incredible. And so many people in the community are grateful to all of law enforcement. But to you today, for twenty-nine years of service and working hard to protect this community, I congratulate you and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. You want to go ahead and come up and?
Yep.
We now move to item number four, under Supervisor Chavez, proclaim November twenty twenty-five as Native American Heritage Month in the County of Fresno.
We have our folks making their way down here. So I'm proud to sponsor this item today on celebrating our Native American community today. As many of you know, we have three recognized federal tribes here in our area, in our county, and a number of other unrecognized tribes that do great work in our community. And this is really an intent to, one, acknowledge, to appreciate, and show respect to our Native American community. So with that, Sonja, you want to say a few words?
I do, thank you, Chairman, members of the board, and Chairman Chavez. I'm here to first thank you for doing this first-time proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. While as a department, we partner with local tribes and tribes across the state to serve in child welfare our Native American youth who are across the state and in our own county, overrepresented in a child welfare system. This is the first year that not only are we doing a monthly celebration, but also doing a proclamation. So really want to thank you for that support. And before I hand it over to Roy McBeirdy, who is one of our managers in the child welfare, I actually want to introduce the team who is here. So in addition to members of child welfare DSS, we have representatives, including the Director of Social Services in North Fork Rancheria, Toni Lovell, and her staff, Rosie Gonzalez, Ashley Poma, and Rosie Kincaid. So thank you for being here. And not only are they here for the proclamation, but really what I truly appreciate from both our staff and from this team is the daily work they really do with us every single day to serve our youth and families. And part of what we're going to hand out is an invitation to our annual event. This year, we're focusing on sixty-five kids and families that are in care. So in November in our, November seventh, we're going to have an event for our youth to both connect them to the services, but also celebrate the National Heritage, I'm sorry. Oh, Native American Heritage Month. I can do this, all right. And with that, I'm going to hand it to Roy, who is going to tell you a little bit more about this proclamation.
Thank you and good morning. It's an honor to join, to join you here today in recognition of Native American Heritage Month. This is a time to celebrate the rich cultures, traditions, and contributions of Native people, both here in Fresno County and across the nation. I'm especially proud of the work that we've done here in Fresno County in partnership with our tribal communities. Together, we built strong relationships, not only with our local tribes, but also with tribes across state lines. Whenever a child becomes involved with child welfare, we do coordinate with the tribal representatives, no matter what state the tribe locate, is located in. These collaborations have been instrumental in strengthening how we serve Native American children and families who come to the attention of child welfare. Our local tribal representatives have provided invaluable insight, guidance, and wisdom that have helped us improve the quality of our work and outcomes of the families we serve, often guiding us in the right direction when we need it. Their partnership reminds us that respecting tribal sovereignty and working hand in hand is not separate goals. They go together. By honoring sovereignty, we build trust, and through that trust, we achieve better results for our children, families, and communities. Personally, working with our tribal partners has been one of the greatest highlights of my time in child welfare. It's been a privilege to learn from and walk alongside those who are so deeply committed to preserving culture, protecting families, and ensuring brighter future for children and Native youth. On Friday, November seventh, again, we have our event, and we'd like to invite all the board members to attend. And with that, I'd like to say again, thank you for honoring Native American Heritage Month and for recognizing our tribal reps that are here today.
Is that? Go ahead.
Do we, do we have anybody else that wants to speak? Not, we can come up, right, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, just go ahead.
Quick comment, so I know Chairwoman Elizabeth from Big Sandy Rancheria wanted to be here. She sent me a message yesterday, just wanting to make sure I put on the record that she greatly appreciates social service, Department of Social Service doing this, so that's all.
Thank you, Sonja, and thank you to our partners here. And it's good timing, because I think Monday, we're having our first meeting of the grant that we received from the state of California on missing Indigenous women and men here in our, in our region. I think that's going to help bridge that gap that we've had and build those bridges with our community. So, great timing, and thank you so much for helping us with this effort.
And I do want to recognize a number of other tribal social services community members who are invited and would like to participate. And Toni has really done a good leadership of getting us all together and working really much closer over the past few years. So we're here as representatives, but there's a lot more support behind us as we partner.
Yeah, I just want to say to the tribes in Madera County wanted to participate, but they're actually doing the same thing today in Madera, so they weren't able to come. Yeah. Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, so we're saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, please?
We now take up the items from, the items that were pulled from this morning, commencing with item twenty-four, under Chairman Mendez. Adopt resolution dedicating the Fresno Sheriff Memorial on October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five to reflect, remember, and give thanks for the service and sacrifices of Fresno County's finest.
Okay, and here today to accept the proclamation is Fresno County Sheriff's Lieutenant Preston Little. I don't see him here. Oh, there he is, come up, come up, Preston. The resolution will be on display at the memorial dedication.
Want to turn to talk?
Yeah. Floor is yours.
Floor is ours, all right. Chairman Mendez, members of the board, thank you so much for your support. I remember, we first came to you in September of twenty twenty-two. So it's been three years since we got your official approval of the project. A year later, you gave us the right to build on county property. I know that was a big lift, working with a lot of the, you on that. And we can't say how thankful we are to get to this point. In about a week, we're going to dedicate a memorial to our twenty-one fallen here at the Sheriff's Office. And I know that we're going to have a large group of family members, over a hundred family members from the twenty-one fallen will be out there. And we envision possibly five hundred to a thousand community members will be out there to dedicate this memorial. Today, we thank you for giving us this proclamation. And on behalf of the Memorial Foundation, on behalf of the families of the fallen, and the Sheriff's Office, thank you for supporting this project from the very beginning and making it easy on us and all of our volunteers to get this very meaningful project done. Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody, yeah, go ahead.
So last week, there was a swearing-in ceremony of the Sheriff's Posse, who will work whenever, and God forbid, we have another line of duty death. But the Sheriff's Posse was sworn in so they can spring into action and provide care, comfort, and services to family members who may lose a loved one in the line of duty. So it was a really amazing event, and I appreciate both the Sheriff and, of course, the association and all the law enforcement personnel who were there, who were thoughtful enough to put an endowment together and to create such an entity. So congratulations to that.
Yep. So I'll make a motion to adopt this resolution. Second. All in favor is going to say an aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed, hearing none, motion carries, please come up.
We now move to thirty-two point one, which was pulled by Supervisor Magzik due to the Levine Act. Under the Administrative Office, approve and authorize the Fresno County Administrative Officer to expend funds in support of the upcoming traffic safety campaign. Don't drink and drive die, don't text and drive die, and don't speed and drive die. Community public service announcements to go on Univision, Screen Vision, Meta Google, and Outfront platforms up to twenty-five thousand.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Paul Nerland, your CAO. The item before you, four thirty-two point one, is authorizing another campaign in regards to avoiding drinking and driving and texting and driving. According to the CHP and other law enforcement agencies, the top reasons that we have fatalities in Fresno County during the holiday season is driving under the influence, texting, distracted driving, or speeding. And so this campaign was very effective last year. It also authorizes expending those funds in District Five's budget. And so I have any, I have Sonja Dosty here to answer any questions about last year's campaign, but I'm here to answer any further questions you may have.
No.
Is there any public comment on this? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Make a motion?
Okay. Second. All in favor is going to say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item number forty-two, under Human Resources, pulled by a member of the public. Approve the indent to the Memorandum of Understanding Regarding County Health Insurance Premium Contribution for Plan Year Twenty Twenty-Six, effective December eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Good morning, Chairman. Just want to read, prepare a statement. Anyway, good morning, good afternoon, good morning, Chairman Mendez, and the team members of the Board of Supervisors, county staff, Hollis, and her team, and community members. My name is Riley Tollford, and I'm honored to stand before you today as the Chapter President of SEIU Local Five Two One, representing bargaining units three, four, twelve, twenty-two, and thirty-six. I'm here to represent these dedicated employees who work tirelessly to keep Fresno County running every single day. I'd like to extend our health, our heartfelt gratitude to this board for your decision to increase the county's contribution to our healthcare plans. This action not only as an investment in the well-being of your public servants, but also as a clear demonstration of your commitment to supporting those who serve our community with dedication and passion. For many county employees, healthcare is more than just a benefit. It is a lifeline for themselves and their families. With rising costs, it has become increasingly difficult for workers to access the care they need without sacrificing other essentials. Your decision to enhance the county's contribution relieves a significant burden for countless families and brings peace of mind to those who give so much to Fresno County. This increase will allow our members to focus more fully on their vital roles, whether they are caring for our most vulnerable residents, keeping our streets safe, or ensuring the smooth administration of county services. When public employees feel valued and supported, it shows in the quality of service we provide to the entire community. We recognize that making decisions about county resources is never easy, and we appreciate your willingness to listen to employees' voices and make choices that put people first. We look forward to continuing our partnership with the board to ensure Fresno County remains a great place to live, work, and thrive. On behalf of SEIU Local Five Two One, I thank you for your leadership, your compassion, and your commitment to the health and well-being to, of all county workers. Together, we are building a stronger, healthier Fresno County for everyone. Lastly, I want to extend my personal appreciation and admiration to Supervisors Mendez, Pacheco, and Magzik, and CEO Nerland. The leadership you have shown in moving Fresno County forward, and your investment in county employees have been essential in making Fresno County a great place to work. And it's hoped that some department heads can learn from the examples you have all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there any other public comment? Bring it back to the board?
Second.
All in favor, so we're saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes all consent items that were pulled from this morning. We return to your regular agenda, item number five, under the Administrative Office. Consider and take action on request for determination of public convenience or necessity in regard to application for alcohol beverage license type twenty by Sola One to be used at two four 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 South Ninth Street, Fresno, California. We do have one screen that's out, just to let up the public and everyone know. The screen over across from me is out, so the screen behind me is working due to the outage on Friday.
So only one of our low-tech screens is actually working. Maybe working.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors, Ron Alexander with the County Administrative Office. As your clerk mentioned, this is an ABCI item before your board, which is a type twenty license, which authorizes the sale of beer and wine to be consumed. license, which authorizes the sale of beer and wine to be consumed off premises where sold. Management Directive 2400 is a policy that, for your board, to make the determination of public convenience or necessity. Those three criteria state that the issuance will not tend to create a law enforcement problem, that it will provide a needed service to the community, and that it will be a positive impact on the local economy. The applicant provided a written response addressing the three criteria, deciding public convenience or necessity. Department of Public Works has been notified. There are no zoning issues related to this application. The sheriff's department was also contacted and reviewed this application. The applicant is in census tract 21, 12.01. There are five off-sale licenses that are allowed by ABC in this census tract. There are currently six off-sale licenses in this census tract, so approval of this one will make seven. I'd also like to note that this is a map of the census tract. The applicant, in tan, the applicant is there in the yellow star. I'd also like to give you a broader picture. There are census tracts that surround this one. So specifically, census tracts 4, 11, and 12.02 that surround this one also have application, or ABC licenses, that total 18, that are, that surround this application. Going back, there is a moratorium on type 20 licenses, so ABC will deny this application unless your board makes a determination of public convenience or necessity. And here is just a depiction of the applicant with the existing licenses and their proximity to the applicant. As you can see, they are within about half a mile to 1.3 miles from the applicant. This is an aerial view of the applicant's site. We have the view of the applicant storefront. We have the north view of the applicant's site, south view, east view, and west view for the record. And again, here are the three criteria for your board to make a determination of public convenience or necessity. I'd also like to note that we did receive one objection to this application. This is from the city of Fresno. I received no other communications objecting to this application. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Okay. Does the applicant want to come up and speak, or do you guys have a question?
Yeah, I just have one question. What was the city of Fresno's objection?
The Neighborhood Market Act.
Okay.
Based on that.
Okay.
They do, it is bordering the applicant's site, so they do object to this. We send out notices to residents, or actually, property owners within 600 feet of the applicant. So the city did receive this meeting notice and did object to it.
Okay. So with that, you want the applicant to come up?
Good morning, everybody. I'm sorry, I don't speak English very well, but I'm gonna try my best. I need the license because I try, like, be a good number in this community and, like, do what I can do for this country, give me a lot of things. My country is not given to me. That's what I can say, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you. Is there anybody in the public that's against this? Want to come up? Hearing none, I'll turn this over to Supervisor Chavez, it's in his district.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank the applicant for submitting and going through the due process. Also want to thank staff for doing a lot of the legwork on this. I don't think it's any secret, as far as the work that I've done in my previous work as a council member over at the city and trying to limit and strike a balance between the oversaturation of liquor licenses in communities, particularly underserved communities, but I wanted to be very thoughtful of this because this is a very specific legal determination that we're being asked to make, whether this is a public necessity with regards to this application or a public convenience. And looking at the data, I think, Mr. Alexander, you referenced the census tracts that are surrounding this. It's no secret to the neighborhood, to the community, that there's already a lot of liquor licenses associated with this area. And, and you're right, and I was actually going to mention that when you look at the census tracts that are adjoining to this community, there's 18 licenses that are already serving the community. So when we look at the data, when we look at what this would do to a community, those are the concerns that, that I have. I also want to enter into the record the number of calls for service that we've had. I pulled that data from our sheriff's department. I wanted to kind of get a little snapshot of what that looks like. And just for the benefit of the public, I just want to go through that very briefly. This is known as Zone 3059. Back in 2021, they received 1,252 calls, 22, 1,108 calls, 23, 1,281 calls. Last year was 1,220, and this year we're about 800, with still some time left for, for the year. So I paint that, that picture so that the public understands what we're dealing with here. Calhoun, as many people know, is divided into two areas. It's got the northern part, which we are responsible for, our sheriff deputies, but it also has the area south of that, which I represented for a number of years. And, and I can tell you, I didn't pull the numbers from Fresno PD, the numbers that I had are old, but this isn't even factoring in the calls for service that come to that specific region. I know for a fact that there are officers that will not go into parts of that neighborhood without backup, and there's a reason for that. So when you look at the calls for service and, and the strain that this puts, and, and I don't want to put our sheriff deputies in any position to oppose the business because it's a policy decision for us up here, but I did want to enter that into the public. But just for me, I can support this just based on the oversaturation of licenses that we have. We already reached the limit with five. We have six now. This would add an additional liquor license to that. And then the last thing I'll say is, this Saturday, we did a big community cleanup in Calhoun. Thank you to our county Public Works and our CAO for helping that. We probably had about a block worth of trash. I decided to go and actually pick up a picker and a trash bag and talk to the residents there as I was picking up trash. And there was, I can tell you, consensus that they did not want an additional liquor license in the community for a number of safety reasons. The kids walk into school, the kids walk into the park that's there close by. And so the primary reason for me not supporting this today is because of the oversaturation of the liquor licenses. So I want to enter that into the record and then make a formal motion to not support this liquor license.
Okay. You got a second? Okay. All in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. 5-0. Thank you, Ron.
We now move to item number six, under Public Works and Planning. Consider appeal of Planning Commission's approval of unclassified conditional use permit number 3761 proposing to allow development and operation of an interstate freeway commercial travel center.
Okay, this is an appeal hearing, and if there is any board members that need to report any ex parte communications they have had regarding this item, they may do so at any time. Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jeremy Shaw with the Department of Public Works and Planning. This item comes to your board on appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of unclassified conditional use permit number 3761 at its April 24, 2025 hearing. The appeal was filed on May the 9, 2025. The project proposes the development and operation of an interstate freeway interchange commercial travel center to be located on three parcels totaling approximately 26.74 acres. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. Available if you have questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Hearing none, I will now open the hearing to receive public testimony. I'll start with the appellant. Is he here? He's not here. Is there any persons in, in favor of that? So is there any people in opposition that actually want, wanted to get built? Okay.
Excuse me. I am standing here on behalf of the developer. Just say a quick thing about this development. It's, it's a great region for our proposed uses. It conforms to all the existing surrounding uses. It sounds like the appealing is not here today, but any questions that we, we need to be answered, we can provide that. And we also have our, our Sequoia Specialty Consultant here as well that can answer questions for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from the board? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if there's any other further questions or comments from the board or questions from staff. If none, I'm going to ask for a motion, which I, I'm going to make the motion, it is in my district.
So to uphold the Planning Commission's?
Yeah, to uphold the Planning Commission's.
I'll second that.
All in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item number seven, under Public Works and Planning. Consider and adopted mitigated, negative declaration including mitigation monitoring reporting program prepared for amendment application number 3842 and classified conditional use permit number 368, based on initial study number 7879, and additional conditions as recommended by staff.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tawana Mutunga, Principal Planner with the Department of Public Works and Planning. The proposal comes to your board with a recommendation of approval by the Planning Commission at its July 24, 2025 hearing. Please note that should your board approve this item, the approval should include the additional conditions identified on the bottom of page two in your agenda item. As a legislative item, final action must be taken by your board. This concludes my brief presentation, unless you have any questions for me at this time.
Okay, is there any questions from the board? I'm going to turn it to public comment. Is there anyone in the public that wants to comment on this? Hearing none. I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move for staff's recommendation.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. All in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item number eight, under Public Works and Planning. Conduct a public hearing considering the formation of Fresno County Underground Utility District number 74, Minewell Avenue, from East Swift Avenue to 120 feet south of Gettysburg Avenue. Consider and adopt a resolution forming Underground District, District Utility District number 74.
All right.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. You need to turn on your mic. Mic.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board of supervisors. My name is John Donmire with the Public Works and Planning Department, Design Division. The purpose of this is to approve, hopefully, a UUD 74, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have them. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the board? I will now ask for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none?
Just a question for county counsel, if I may. With this item, we can, again, there's three different actions and some subactions within, like Action 2. Can we just make one motion for staff's recommendation on this? Is that adequate?
Yes, you may.
I will make that motion.
Okay, and I will close the public hearing. You got a second? All in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item number nine, and Public Works and Planning. Receive verbal presentation from staff regarding operator's compliance with conditions of approval for unclassified conditional use permit number 3751. Take public testimony and consider staff's recommendation to relax modified conditions as follows. A, increase event days by 10 days for a maximum of 20 evening events for a five-month period as identified in operational statement. And B, alternative, your board, excuse me, evening events shall conclude by 9:30 p.m. and cleanup and lights turned off by 10:00. Or as an alternative, your board may consider allowing operation to continue with limitations as specified during June 18, 2024 approval action.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Chris Motta with the Department of Public Works and Planning. On June 18, 2024, your board on appeal of the Planning Commission's denial approved unclassified conditional use permit number 3751 to allow a high-intensity park authorized to host various events. The operational statement states that park activities will occur primarily during a five-month period between May and September, but I do need to clarify the, an ambiguity in the agenda item. Event, the event center is available year-round, but primarily between those months of May through September. And that's, again, stated in the operational statement. At the June hearing in 2024, parties in opposition to the proposal presented testimony indicating opposition. As part of your board's action, operations were limited to 10 evening events per year with all activities ceasing by 9:30 p.m. and lights off by 10:00 p.m. The operation is limited to 60 events per year total. That's the maximum amount limited to. Your June 2024 approval action also directs the staff to return after a year to provide a status of the operation and general compliance of the conditions. According to the applicant, five events were held during this observation period, and staff confirmed that no noise or operational complaints were received after reaching out to the Fresno County Code Enforcement Division, Sheriff's Office, and Department of Public Health. Based on the lack of complaints, staff recommends that the number of evening events be increased to allow 20 evening events with no changes to the restriction that events end at 9:30 p.m. and lights off by 10:00 p.m. This item was publicly noticed with notices mailed to the surrounding property owners within a quarter mile, and representatives of the operator are presented today to speak on behalf of the operation. This concludes my presentation, unless you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is there any public comment on this item?
I think the green is good. Good morning. My name is Paul Brar. We're here on behalf of the property located on Shields. And one of the items that really makes it difficult for us to, you know, accept the timelines that you're giving to us is that we've had plenty of parties that were booked. However, when they call other venues in the area, those venues are allowed to be open till 10:00 during the week, and some of them are 11:00 p.m. on Saturdays. So we, we only book five events during the whole year. Makes it difficult. Those timelines just don't line up with what other businesses are using. We just feel like it's not really a fair business practice for us to be out there, you know, 9:30, lights out at 10:00, when most places are, music is on until 10:00, and they're allowed to, you know, leave within a reasonable period of time. So, you know, we were supposed to have this hearing somewhere in May or June. I know there was some change in personnel, so things kind of got delayed and the notices weren't sent out. However, we feel that we definitely have earned, you know, requests at least to get our times changed so we can go till 10:00 p.m. Most of our events are going to be on the weekends. We're rarely going to have an event during the week. And we're not going to get to that 20 number with these hours that we have. During the summer, it's too hot, nobody wants to book early events. They all want to stay a little bit later. We have a 9:30 cutoff, 10:00 p.m. lights off, which is almost impossible. So we've been having to cut off at 9:00 to make that 10 o'clock. We didn't want any violations. So we're here requesting that, you know, the board consider giving us at least 10:00 p.m. on the music, and then give us a reasonable amount of time to get everything shut down and wound down so people can exit.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other public comment, or want to turn this over to Supervisor Pacheco? It's in his district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this is in my district. We had some concerns from the neighborhood when this first came to the board, so we asked them to demonstrate and to be a good neighbor. I think they've clearly demonstrated that. I think the request today is a reasonable request. I would make a motion to accept staff's recommendation with the addition that we will move the time to close things up at 10:00 with everything else out by 11:00 o'clock. We will grant them that additional hour in addition to staff's recommendation. I would make that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Got a second? All in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
All right, appreciate it.
Yeah.
We now move to item number 10. Board of Supervisors committee reports and comments.
Anybody want to start? Go ahead.
This will be brief, Mr. Chair. Just want to thank our CAO, thank our county Public Works folks for the big cleanup we had in Calhoun, very much appreciated by the residents. Not sure how, how much trash we cleaned up, but it was a whole block worth of trash, but that's trash that's not going to be in our alleyways, our
One of the items that was approved today was to allow for a project to move forward on Alder Springs. Alder Springs was heavily damaged during the creek fire, and so the Public Works is going to be fixing a road that was damaged in that fire. And so I just want to say thank you for that to my colleagues and also to Public Works for getting that moving forward. And then also wanted to let all of you know that the Rooster item that we dealt with at the last meeting, we've got our first meeting with a subcommittee that's been formed, I believe, in November. And so we plan on moving quickly with three meetings, and we will make a determination when we can bring something back to all of you. That's all I have.
No, just a quick deal. I spent, let's see, last week, I spent a day and a half, the Air Board Retreat. Been on that board for 11 years, and that's always an interesting, and it's actually, it gets very technical, but I kind of like technical stuffs. Actually had a good time there and learned very well. So with that, we will go to the next item.
Item number 11. Receive board commissions and committees.
There we go.
Court appointments.
Who wants to start? You got any?
Yeah. At the last meeting, the board approved my nomination of Mary Lali Dialba to the hospital, representing position of the Emergency Medical Care Committee, based on clarifying information since received from the committee about Ms. Dialba's qualification. The appointment should be corrected to the RN position previously held by Renee Hill. Just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay. I've got one. This is for the Child Care and Development Local Planning Council. Appoint Arlene Grave Stevens to the council member's position previously held by Frida Kaplan, a new term to 010427.
Thank you.
So I need, I'll make a motion to approve those.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the board on any matter not on this agenda.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is James Cardoza. I'd actually rather-- Well, my name is James Cardoza. I'd rather not be here today because I have actually a staff of employees who is depending on me at one of the most innovative manufacturing companies here in the Central Valley that's providing products to customers throughout the U.S., Canada, most recently the United Kingdom. Those include heavy equipment manufacturing companies, one of the U.S.'s major automotive manufacturing companies, a company in the hydrogen fuel cell manufacturing industry in U.K. You know, I have those customers relying on me. I have employees relying on me. In the past, I had teammates and coaches relying on me, including Coach Jim White of McFarland. You probably saw the movie about him. I ran under him internationally in China back in high school. Teammates, NCAA Division One, depending on me. I also have two kids who depend on me. But unfortunately, due to fraud, corruption, falsification of police reports, violation of conflict of interest rules, various state and federal constitutional law violations, including First, Second, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, Eighth, Thirteenth, and Fourteenth Amendment violations, my kids were stolen from me six years ago, and I have had no contact with them in that six-year period, except for when my ex-wife and them were standing on the sidelines when I was running the Fresno Marathon last year. That would be my fourth marathon, you know, after multiple years of competing and actually being recognized for my hard work and dedication to teamwork and skill set that I brought to the companies I worked, you know, including like working directly for Wells Fargo's Chief Ag Economist, Michael Swanson, out of Minneapolis, working for the CEOs of some of the largest and most respective agribusiness companies throughout the Western U.S. But alas, I'm not sure if it was for political reasons or I just got caught up in a racketeering system that my kids were stolen. Two of the employees of the Fresno County DA office who were involved in this theft of my kids and corruption, including Mr. David Devon Sinzi and Mrs. Lees Yurazoli, who you, I think Mr. Butterfield has already been notified by me that just this last year, they were disciplined by the FPPC, which I know each one of you also has to comply with their rules. You're having to comply, but they're not, but they're supposed to be the law enforcers of our county. I would need to wrap it up because I know we're short on time. You do have an agenda item.
Okay, wrap it up. I'll give you--
Yes, okay. So Blessings versus Freestone, 520 U.S., 329 in 1997, stated that federal child support enforcement program was not intended to benefit individual children or custodial parents, meaning there is no constitutional right to child support. However--
Okay, thank you.
You'll be in, I'll see you guys in court. I need my kids back. I will take all the county's money if not. Trust me on that.
Good luck, David.
Yeah.
Good morning, Supervisors. Tal Eslick on behalf of First Steps Recovery. Thanks for the time this morning. Just want to reiterate, we've made significant progress on permitting issues outlined by the county. As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, we take our engagement with the county very seriously. We're acting with speed and urgency, and there is no resource sensitivity or corner cutting. Reminder that we serve your constituents. We're part of this community as well. We're an open book. You guys are all welcome to come visit, see the property for yourself. You'll be impressed. I'm certain of that. I've got Derek Chesbrough with First Steps Recovery here, who's part of the leadership team. Again, we are committed to working with the county. I know this will be an item you guys talk about later this morning. I do have one handout. It's recent correspondence between us and the county by John Kinsey. This will not come as any surprise to County Council, but again, I have a printed copy of that for, it's from yesterday evening. It aligns with the comments I've made this morning. Finally, this morning, we have Charlie Maxwell here. He's going to say a few words about the work he's doing. He is one of the team of folks that we brought in to address these issues. Again, reiterating the urgency and the seriousness that we take these things. Again, I thank you for your time and reminder that we're an open book. Come see the property. You'll be impressed. This is not one of those situations where we're trying to sort of vary the lead here. We're proud of the work we do. It's important. And I do want to thank specifically Supervisor Magzig for his attention on this issue. And it's not surprising, but we do appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tal.
Good morning, Chairman Mendez, members of the board. Charlie Maxwell, 10925 Rusty Spur Lane, rural Clovis, home of Rusty Spur Arena. I've made three site visits in the last six days to First Step Recovery. Since that time, I was retained by John Kinsey to help augment with precision to resolve these issues. We've obtained electrical permits. By this Friday, all electrical permit issues on this, both properties will be resolved. We've looked at the other issues of HVAC, roof, plumbing. Those issues are resolved. There are some issues of some buildings on site that are not compliant, some storage sheds which are in the process of being removed, also some issues of some buildings that were converted from different uses and not properly done. Those issues do take a little bit of time. I called our personal architect, Robin Goldberg, outlined the issues, and she said, I can start in two weeks. I'll have them to you in six weeks. So it's a question of what can we resolve today quickly and fast and get on board with the board and your Public Works and Code Enforcement Office. I know most of you, from Mr. Bretfield, Mr. Pacheco, Mendez, and certainly Mr. Mazik, Mr. Chavez, I do not know you, sir, but I spent 30 years in law enforcement. I have been to so many drug rehab programs, halfway houses, patient facilities. I'll tell you that First Steps is one of the cleanest operation I've ever seen. They're professionally run. What's done for the patients in terms of outlining their needs and how it's operated is nothing but first-class. At the same time, we've lectured First Steps that they need to get on board. They need to take your actions from Code Enforcement extremely serious and do not waste any time on getting things resolved. I'm happy to work with any member of your board, Code Enforcement or otherwise, in trying to resolve this issue and help this facility move forward. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
And I do believe you got copies of the permits last night that have been attained.
Is there anyone else who wants to? Go ahead. You can come up. You'll be, any more after you, or you'll be-- Okay, get up, get up, too.
Get in line.
Get in line. I was wondering why you guys were just sitting there.
Hi, I'm here to ask a question about--
Get closer to the mic.
--a civil action project at Clovis West. As an athlete, most travel practices happen at night. And in this, lighting within public parks and even in schools raises issues in child safety. And since daylight savings is coming up, I was wondering how this issue can be addressed? Because at local schools like Maple Creek and Liberty Elementary, in which they host events like Little League Baseball, it is hard to see where the children are, and it also makes it hard for practices to be conducted. This lighting problem in public parks and also schools further increases physical dangers and in a sports setting and also in childhood settings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Boston Barr. I'm a 17-year-old senior at Clovis West as well, and I wanted to discuss the upcoming redistricting bill with you guys. The new plan for redistricting in California coming up in early November, if it's implemented, do you guys think that midterm voter turnout will improve? Because concerns over districting being shifted to heavily favored Democratic voters and those aligned with Governor Newsom can make voters feel their vote might not matter. As a soon-to-be voter who primarily aligns with the Republican Party, I'm worried that my vote in local elections will be less influential if the redistricting plan goes through. So your guys' opinions or thoughts on the districting plan?
Thank you. This is public comment, not public question and answer.
Okay, thank you.
If you guys wait like another 10 minutes after you speak, I'll come answer those questions real quick.
Yeah, he went to Clovis West, so--
I'm very proud of all the Eagles in here right now.
Good morning, Chairman and Board. My name is Jackson Saucita. I'm also a senior at Clovis West. I just wanted to come up real quick and say thank you for all that you do as in our project that we're going through in AP Government. We're learning more about you guys and the local governments, and just want to say thank you real quick.
Okay. You're welcome. Okay, with that, I'll close the public comment. Is there any more? We actually heard one on closed session. Hearing none for, I'm going to turn it over to council.
Yes, nothing to report out now. Would not expect a report out following the closed session, so you may adjourn from--
Thank you. Do you want to make a motion? Second. All in favor, say my saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. So Nathan will talk to you guys.
Should have him come up and take a picture with you.
Yeah.
Perfect.